Hello and welcome to the November 21st, 2023 Select Board Meeting. The entire Select Board is present along with the Town Manager and the Town Clerk, members of the public, assessors, HR. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have the approval of our November 8 minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Coolio. First, public comment. Then I will close the first public comment. We have no public hearings, no reports, no department reports, no unfinished business. This is going to be a quick one. Town Manager Report.
We sent out an RFP for an auditor. Lisa Vargas sent a letter to approximately 20 auditing firms. We received three letters, two declining to bid, and we actually received one formal bid from our existing auditor, RHR Smith &amp; Company. The bid amount for fiscal year 24 to 2026, amount of $14,700. From fiscal year 2027 to 2028, $15,700. That's in Tab 11. There's an extra in there for a single audit. Good news is we received so much grant funding that we're about to spend that we need to have an additional audit on top of what we do. So tonight, I am seeking a motion for approval tonight to keep RHR Smith &amp; Company as our auditor until fiscal year 2028.
So this went out to bid and both of these companies just declined to bid?
They just sent a lot, I mean, effectively every other company declined the bid. Those two just were sent to courteous enough to...
They actually let you know they were not going to bid.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we award the bid to RHR Smith &amp; Company as presented.
One second. Any further discussion?
Is how long have they been doing our audits now? Been quite a while, right?
Been at least, you must say, eight years.
Eight years, yeah, sounds about right.
Well, they always do a good job.
They've kept us out of, kept us out of trouble.
All those in favor?
I had a bid meeting with Mike Zarba, SLR, their engineer firm for the Outfall 7/Great Falls project off Moulton Street. We had four contractors in attendance. It was a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting. It's good to have contractor interest. Bids are due December 12th and will be on the agenda for the 19th and hopefully it's So for Town Hall Lobby Update, we've arrived at a color choice. It's sea haze, it's a soothing gray with soft green undertones. We'll be working on unifying the trim. Right now, we have all different trim colors and just overall clearing out some of the clutter in our lobby area and working on some of our interior decorating.
You didn't want to go with the town bright orange?
We've considered many options, but...
The ever-popular institutional color.
There was an Open Space Plan Committee meeting last night, well-attended from all kinds of different stakeholders in the community. This project will include inventory of open space we have already. It will include study of future land for potential open space and it'll study habitats, farmland, and this project will integrate with the comprehensive plan and will incorporate ordinance amendments. CACs, our Transportation NPO and NPO's Metropolitan Planning Organization, is kicking off a Safety Action Plan. This is part of the Federal Highway Administration's Safe Streets For All Program and incorporated with that is a Vision Zero Initiative, which means designing a safe system, transportation system with a goal of zero deaths. It's very aspirational, but all the major highway organizations and our regional planning organizations are making it a goal. So one of those components is safe speeds, safe streets. So we know Route 4 has some safety issues. We have had one safety study already and we're working on implementation of that already. So more to come on that. And we have a few staff that have volunteered to be on that committee. So it's a region-wide committee and we have representation from Burwick. And last thing I have, the tree was put up today. The tree lighting is December 1st at dusk and the parade is December 2nd at 1:30.
So far, I've heard positive feedback that people like that it's actually split up into two nights or parade and tree separate. So some of the feedback I heard was especially with like some of the days where it's been colder, that after the parade or families that have been out there all day, just as much as they want to, don't stay.
Well, my thought was just like people that want to be at the tree side, the tree lighting, but don't want to be at the parade, there's nowhere to put them to park because there's cars in line and the whole road forever.
So do we have an update on the playground? Is that all done?
Playground, they're wrapping that up. They're putting some final touches on that. The engineered wood fiber was layered and compacted by a skid steer. So they put in a layer, compacted it, and then put another layer. I believe that they're wrapping up this week. If they're not done, they're wrapping up this week. They had a few, like one of the remaining last pieces they have to install.
So did they decide they weren't going to do the final paving until spring?
Both, so the, actually, on the tennis/pickleball court, the fence posts are up and we're just going to wait on paving for both the base and the final paving for both courts in the springtime.
Any other questions for the Town Manager? Anything else for us?
Yeah, that's it. The complete summary report.
Terrific. Select Board Communications, we have a notice from Xfinity Comcast that starting December 20th, 2023, their prices are going up again, a range of anywhere from 13 cents to $6 depending on what kind of package you have or what kind of additions you like. It's not news, but it's happening. Accounts payable. All right. Payroll warrant number 31 from November 16th, 2023 in the amount of $79,059.43. Payroll warrant number 32 from November 16th, 2023 in the amount of $501.22. Payroll warrant number 33 from November 22nd, 2023 in the amount of $86,738.76. And accounts payable warrant number 34 from November 21st, 2023 in the amount of $285,564.34. I will make the motion that we pay our bills.
No second now?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Keep going. All right. New business, water upgrade contract bid results. Don't all get up at once.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you about the project. I know Main Water provided an update to you folks two weeks ago. We had opened bids, did a public bid process following the drinking water SRF requirements. Four bids were received on October 31st. I believe your packet should have a bid tab and should have the award recommendation We are recommending award to the low bid, which is Apex Construction based in Summersworth, New Hampshire. We reviewed the bid results through the Main Drinking Water Program, the Funding Agency, which is a state revolving fund through the Main Bond Bank. They concurred with our recommendation and checked all the, we checked all the boxes with the process of procuring under their requirements. So some of the requirements to the funding are, attached to the funding are contractors got to do certified payrolls, Davis Bacon wage rates, that's part of the contract. American Iron and Steel is a requirement of the funding for this project, so that impacts lead time of equipment to ensure that we get American Iron and Steel requirements that applies to the underdrain system that's going to be part of the filter upgrade and the blowers and any of the piping for connecting the pumps and the pipe gallery. So we've been working kind of collaborative, collaboratively with Main Water Company since they took over operations back in February, I guess it was. Obviously, there was some initial difficulty when they first took over with the filters and really the outcome of, you know, once we were able to stabilize, or Main Water was able to stabilize the filters, we identified the underdrains are really plugged up with manganese and they could not be fixed. They're over 20 years old. So we kind of, in collaboration with Main Water, we kind of reprioritized this Contract 1 in consultation with the Drinking Water Program to make sure that we could, you know, address the filter issues moving forward. Now that things are stabilized, we have time to fix the filters for the long term and also upgrade the blowers, which go back to 1998, so a field blower motor was, was the other part of the problem that occurred with the filters back in, I think it was February, March. And then we have the pumps, the existing pumps that the town purchased last year that are going to be installed under this contract. And at the same time, we're going to replace the other set of pumps, raw water and finish water. So moving forward, we are going to be, assuming the board concurs with our recommendation and we can award to Apex Construction, that will start the ball rolling on getting equipment ordered and getting that first contract complete. We are, I am planning to meet with Main Water and probably James either next week or the week after to talk about priorities for the next part of the upgrade. Now that Main Water's had an opportunity to really get familiar with the system, really want to get their input as we move forward. So I would anticipate the next time, you know, either myself or Main Water provides an update, we'll have a better handle on direction we're going, you know, with the remaining work over there. The good news is with the rainfall, the high rainfall that we experienced this year, the manganese levels have been very low. I've been consulting with Main Water Company and basically the manganese levels have been very manageable unlike two years ago when the drought conditions allowed the manganese to release from the river causing significant water quality issues. And what happened with that, that also plugged up the filters, which resurfaced, you know, in February. It was kind of a surprise, but it was a long-term issue that was building. So moving forward as part of an operational plan, Main Water, you know, they're going to have an SOP to do chemical cleanings of the clarifier to help reduce, you know, the buildup of manganese over time. And then as part of our work, we're planning a third blower because there's two existing blowers. If one blower goes down, there's no redundancy for the second blower, which is needed for the filter backwash. So that is something that we've identified and we're starting to address with this first contract. So with that, I guess I'll entertain any questions.
I don't have any immediate questions. I reviewed the bid from Apex and it seems that they are more than qualified to handle this situation and, you know, compared to the other bids that are 20% more, I don't feel like there's any, any significant justification to go any other way.
I agree and Wright Pierce has done many projects with Apex. Most recently, we just wrapped up a project with them in Bangor, Maine, a booster pump station. They are a very good contractor. I have had no bad experiences working with them. Again, we've done many millions of dollars of projects, very, very good company, very capable.
Any other comments or questions?
My, you know, is not a real concern, but is because of the being so much lower is things like labor costs and things are pretty standard is I'm just concerned that equipment prices seem to be so much lower for some of these units than the other bidders is, you know, I'm just kind of concerned about why that is, you know, is, you know, where, you know, we have Apex furnishing something for $10,000 and then, you know, the next lowest one is $27,000 for the same unit.
Right. So on the, on the underdrains and the filter media, because it's a preparatory treatment process, we did get permission from the Drinking Water Program to basically kind of sole-source that equipment. So the bid documents, so the vendor provided the same bid to each one of the contractors. The contractor had to look at it and decide what they wanted to put on it for a markup and then obviously, you know, their approach to doing the installation. You know, looking at the bids, there is a spread and it's not unusual. I think the good thing is that there were four bids. The hard, hard situation is when you get like two bids and one is really high and one is really low, you're like, what did they miss? I can, you know, based on our estimate, going into this, we had estimated about $400,000, you know, 375 to 425. So I feel like Apex's bid, I don't think, you know, in talking with them, we have spoken with them, we've reviewed their bid, we don't believe they missed anything in their bid and we're pretty confident they got the bases covered. So I think it's a competitive bid process, but again, I'm not surprised at some higher bids. We oftentimes see that.
Yeah, I've worked in the construction field and so, yeah, people bid things if they don't want the job, you know, bid them high. And like I said, it's not a real concern, I just, you know, those things tend to stand out for me, that's all. I've seen Apex around, you know, over the years and stuff, is I've never heard anything bad about them, is I don't have a problem with them, you know, just trying to get some clarification.
Yeah, and I personally worked with them going back to 2010. We did a project, I think it was a $7 million water treatment plant project in Maine and they did a great job. And now Heath Todd is now the president. Back then, he was working for his father. So they have a good track record of continuity with their superintendents. You know, we're working with superintendent's kids now that are now superintendents at Apex. So it's really a good company, so.
If there are no other comments or questions, I'll entertain the motion, I guess.
I'll make a motion that we award the bid for the water treatment plant upgrades to Apex Construction for the amount of $448,200.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Well, thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, you too. Thank you, Dan.
Let's get some clean water.
We have clean water, let's keep it. Personnel policy. Hello?
Hi. Do you want to just, I'll just introduce myself.
Please.
Okay. Betsy Olton from HR Main Consulting and you all know Cassidy, I believe. So just to start out, James hired me, I don't know, several months ago, I guess, to just review your handbook. As you may or may not know, laws are changing sort of all the time and so it used to be you'd have an employee handbook and, you know, you could review it every so many years and now we really try to look at them every year, especially with all the sort of changing laws. And what we did in this process, just so that you know, is James, Cassidy, myself and Lisa Vargas, you know, reviewed the sections together. I made recommendations based on some of, some of this, a lot of this is existing language that was, that seemed appropriate for your needs here in Burwick. And then once we sort of came to a consensus, we also asked the department heads to look at it. I think we gave them about a week to just review it and see if there's anything that, you know, maybe they had concerns or needed clarifications or maybe, you know, we missed something and then we, once we sort of went through that process, then we, then we also sent it out to the employees. I'm a firm believer in making sure that everybody has input when we're reviewing an employee personnel handbook. So that was the process. And what I typically do and it's, I sort of take your lead, I guess, is there is a summary sheet that I thought, you know, I would just go down and indicate what has been changed or updated and then answer any questions or we can jump into questions, whatever you folks prefer.
Well, you might be helpful if you just kind of go through some of the outlining changes.
Sure. Okay. So the very beginning and Cassidy has your original one here in case we have to refer back to it, but so we went through, removed the gender clause and put they and them in there throughout the document instead of his or her. Interestingly enough, tonight I'm looking at it again and I see a his/her in here that we'll need to correct. So that's why, you know, many eyes is always helpful for these types of documents, so I'll make sure that's corrected. We changed the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Section 2.4, the disability accommodation, you already had one in there, which was great, but we updated it to include the Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act, a new law that came into effect in 2023. Section 2.5, we just, you had a storm closing absence policy. We essentially took a lot of the appendices out of the appendix and put them into the body of the handbook as, you know, you sort of, you know, it just makes more sense in flowing that way. So that's what we did there. If I'm going too fast, tell me to slow down. Section 2.7, workers' comp protocol and procedures, we just updated it to include sort of a reporting process, making sure that we have modified duty and return to work and information on pay and benefits at the time if there is a workers' comp claim. I know that MMA, particularly your workers' comp insurer prefers that we have and asks that we have the return to work and modified duty portion in the employee handbook, so we included that. Section 3.5, we just updated the department head positions to be current. Section 3.4, so the trend that I'm seeing especially most, what I forgot to say is 99% of my clients are municipalities or quasi-municipalities, so because it's very different than the private sector. And so what I was seeing sort of in the probationary period, most private sectors don't have a traditional probationary period, but public sectors do. There's typically a six-month probationary period and at that, a lot of municipalities sort of before we entered into this, you know, sort of crazy recruitment scenario in the, in the world, were holding back people using any type of leave until their six-month probationary period advanced. The Earn Paid Leave Law then came into effect, which said you have to allow them to use their time after three months, not after six months. But the trend that I'm seeing is, you know, we certainly, we've learned from COVID, we don't want people to show up to work sick. So we're just removed that sort of, you know, requirement and, you know, we look at it that, you know, people have, can start accruing from the date of hire and if they need to use the time, they can put in the request to use it if it's vacation and they can certainly call out sick and be paid for it and that we want to encourage that behavior.
So I have a question regarding to that. So when it's hourly employees, they're accruing the time even though they're in their probationary period.
Yes.
So at this point then, there won't be any safeguards in place for, when you first come onboard, the first 30, 60, 90 days, I know what you're saying about the trend, but it's one thing to call in sick, we don't want anyone to come to work sick, but what if somebody starts here and then two weeks later they ask for vacation time?
So we could, so you always have, the department heads always have the right to deny vacation time regardless of whether you're probationary or not, and I would certainly encourage that. You know, this is also set into motion for a lot of times when you hire somebody and they say, oh gee, I already had a week planned vacation, would you honor that type of thing? So department heads always have that and the Town Manager has all the right to deny that. So, and also...
They also need to accrue the time too, so...
Right.
Yeah.
So that makes a difference.
But also they're in probationary period, so if they are abusing the system...
Then they're not going to...
We have recourse.
And you, then you want that on there. I was thinking of it more from a, just go ahead and say, what if one department leader is like, sure, you've built up a couple days, you want to take a couple days off because this is coming short, but another department leader doesn't. When you don't have a set policy and you leave it to the discretion of many, that's where you tend to get some unbalance. I'm not opposed to this, I'm just bringing that point up.
Yeah, no, good point. I think some of these things can't be helped because a department, a department may not be able to manage, you know, two people on a vacation at the same time regardless of how long they've been here. And sometimes it does become a department issue in terms of operations. So, you know, is, you know, again, making sure that the department heads are all on board with understanding, you know, when it's appropriate to deny vacation time and it would have to be, you know, because it's a significant operation issue or three other people have a day, the same day off and they can't take it or, or whatever. So thank you for...
I was thinking more, I thought that someone's brand new.
Yeah.
They need that transitional time to be here, to be focused, to be learning their job.
Yeah.
So you want them here, unless of course they're sick, then...
Yeah. No, I think it's really for purposes of, again, just allowing that, the opportunity to, and I think if, you know, if somebody comes on board and they're hired, you know, and they say, you know, I have this vacation time, that's, that's there for them. So that was just my recommendation. So section 3, 4, we updated the exempt positions that were currently in there. 3.5 was the urinapetism, what was, again, an appendix put back in the section. Retired main pirs rehire, we just updated it to coincide with the police conduct with a few minor edits. 3.8, we talked about, so going back to the probationary period, what you folks are using now, James, just remind me, I think I'm correct in this, but I provided a probationary period, you know, we all understand that to be an at-will sort of environment for that period of time, but we still, you know, need to make sure that we're meeting with our employees and documenting. So I developed this one-page form, which is a two, four, two-month, four-month check-in that the supervisors have to sit and meet with their employees during that probationary period. And then we talked about, James was on board with sort of a different type of a performance review, if you will, it's more about performance management and it's a system where after their six-month probationary period, then every six months they meet with their manager and there's a questionnaire they get ahead of time to either fill out or just be prepared to meet and talk about what are things that you could do better, where do you think you can improve, what are your goals for your career, and those types of conversations versus a sort of a, you know, a corrective action type of review with the intent and idea that when somebody, when there needs to be a correction made, it happens when that occurs. So that's what, it's not, you know, it's not put in full detail in the handbook, but there's a blurb about that, if you will.
So training was already provided to department leaders?
We, we trained, I don't know, a couple months ago, we had that rollout with the performance management. I can't remember when it was, Linda, but yeah.
Okay. No, that's good.
Section 4, one, again, just we updated employee conduct and public relations. There were just some words in there that were sort of, you know, outdated and things like that that I updated and also just moved back into the body of the handbook. Same with harassment and discr... Same with harassment and discrimination policy. Outside employment, it's still in there, it's just covered under section, it doesn't say it here, but it's covered under section 4.2. Basically, what it had said was that we could require an employee to terminate their outside employment, and we really have no control over, we can say that, you know, if it interferes with your full-time work here, but the sentence in there said we could basically terminate them from their outside employer, which we don't have any power to do. So I removed that. Technology use, again, that's an updated policy with all of the, you know, new technology that we have that continues to be updated, as well as social media. Those policies were, again, in your appendix, we moved them into the body of the, of the document. Vehicle use policy, we updated it, essentially, you have a very specific vehicle use policy for each of your departments. We sort of, we left that alone, but we did include requirements on safety and reporting accidents to ensure that people, you know, followed that protocol. Lunch break, rest periods and breaks, there were, there were examples of suggestions on things. Are you laughing about that? There were, there were some certain, like, you know, suggestions on what your break should be used at, and we just, you know, thought that that was probably not a place that we should, that, an item that we should put in there. So. We did remove mutual agreement to change work schedules. Previously, it sort of said that the employees and supervisor had to agree on changing work schedules, and that's really a management right to be able to make those decisions. So we removed that mutual agreement section. Overtime, so some, some places, I don't know what you folks do in the county, but some places will include things like, if you're out sick, that will go toward your 40 hours so that you can, if you work over 40, you get overtime. Some places use vacation, whatever. We have changed the paid time status to only allow overtime after an employee actually works 40 hours. We have created direct deposit, making that mandatory now. I don't think, I think there are very few people that, you know, that immediately affected, but that's now mandatory. 6.3, discipline and corrective action, we somewhat updated that, mostly the same sort of progressive discipline and verbal counselings.
Was that 6.3 or 6.4?
6.3, and then the grievance process is 6.4. Let me just double-check. Do you have the 6.? Okay, yeah, 6.3 is, sorry. Discipline and corrective action, and then 6.4 is the grievance process.
Okay, so you just, okay.
And we didn't change much on the discipline and corrective action. That's your original language. What we did, and now I can't remember if it was here or not, Linda, in terms of some of the, some of the things that Linda brought to my attention, which was great, and I appreciated that, was that, you know, we do have human resources here. What we have said to sort of leave the town manager out of sort of the weeds of these actions is that if people have complaints, that they are to report it to HR, and if Cassidy needs assistance with that, she will reach out to me, but it goes to her first. And so then there'll be a determination whether there might be an outside investigation that has to happen, or whatever the case may be. So that was a big change, and I appreciate that, Linda.
And I think that just should be noted, that that's done to protect the neutrality of the town manager.
Yes.
So that when that process is done, if the employee wants an appeal or whatnot, they can then go to the town manager, and he can look at it independently.
Yeah.
Either way.
Yeah. Yep. I don't think we did anything different with your smoking and tobacco use. We just embedded it back into the handbook. The infectious diseases and exposure control, we removed it and placed it into the safety manual. I just felt it belonged there instead of in this personnel handbook. Your alcohol and drug policy, again, removed in the appendix, put it in here. Paid time off, so you'll see, you may have had some questions about why sort of I listed the paid time, paid time off, and then vacation and sick, and all of sort of those categories. And we did that because you have union contracts. Some union contracts have vacation and sick, some, you know, and so then the non-union have PTO. And so some of these policies, you know, are going to affect everybody, so that's why that language is in there. And again, the paid time off piece was removed requirement to wait until after probationary period, which is similar to essentially the vacation. Change to PTO runs concurrently with family medical leave, not waiting until after the PTO runs out. I think your old policy just didn't run it concurrently. And so, those of you who don't know, family medical leave should always be run concurrently if the person is eligible with any accrued time that people are taking off as a result. So we removed all of these personal days, vacation, annual, and sick leave. Were all, were all just specific to the collective bargaining agreements, so we didn't feel a need to put it in here, or we only have in the, so anything that sort of conflicts with the employee handbook, the collective bargaining will supersede. So that typically covers, you know, any of their time, paid time off. So I didn't see the reason to have to list that all. Otherwise, we would be listing all of their full contracts into the personnel handbook. So that's why those are removed. So I did remove the, we did remove the section 8, PTO transfers. And so that was sort of the old-fashioned sick bank, if you will, or before sick bank. So, it's common practice a lot, in a lot of municipalities, where if they know somebody is an employee sick, another employee will say, "Hey, I've got extra PTO, I'm going to donate it to this person." Well, the problem then becomes, what if you don't like this person? And nobody donates time to them and all of that. So we try to remove those transfer policies because they're not really overseen by anybody. If you wanted to do something like that, and we discussed it, and we decided we really, there wasn't really that need for it, was you would need to set up a sick bank, which would, there's all kinds of sort of, you know.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of regulations involving that, so we just didn't see the need for it. Especially, you know, these folks do get a lot of paid time off. There's also the availability of short-term disability for non, you know, non-work-related injuries, and there's also workers' comp, so we left that out. Again, family medical leave, just updated it to include sort of, you know, how does the benefit work? Another great catch that I didn't know, that Linda caught for us, was the, there was language, and it's in a lot of actually personnel handbooks, where if you are out on leave and you don't pay your portion of your health insurance benefits, then we can essentially stop your coverage. And that was, you know, I guess-
But if you're on FMLA, you can't stop the coverage.
Right.
Once they clear FMLA-
You can.
If they fail to pay at 100%, then you can shut their coverage off.
Right. But we can't before then, and so that's when we, we made that change in that sentence, so. This particular military family leave was a separate sort of called-out section, and it actually is part of the Family Medical Leave Act, so that's where it is located. Am I missing a page? Oh, sorry.
You associate that the 8.9 leave, leave without pay, remove this section? Is that?
Where is it?
8.9, you just did the military family leave, so the next one is leave without pay, and it says, remove this section? So there's no-
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. So, let's see, what was that on? If we look up the old one, bear with me a second. Oh, because there's no mechanism for just unpaid leave besides family medical leave, that's what we removed.
Okay, so, my question with that becomes, there's no guidance then? If somebody has three months of FMLA, and their doctor says that they're going to be back in 10 days, what do you do for those 10 days? You put them on a personal leave of absence, which is basically unpaid leave. It's not the word for unpaid leave. And then the stipulation with that would be, you can, the discretion of the department leader requesting the town manager would be, okay, you can be on a personal leave of absence for up to three months, but the conditions apply. You don't get holiday, you don't accrue time, and you have to pay your benefits at 100% while you're out on that. After six months, an enforcement decision is made by the town manager.
Yeah, I think we, I think the reason, it wasn't for, let's, do you have one second?
Yeah.
For me to read, okay, sorry. So I think we might want to amend it. And the reason I removed it was because it made it sound like such leave will not exceed one year in length. And I, I was reading this as sort of, a couple, a couple different things. But I do think we need something in there, I'm just going to have to reword it.
Somebody could be on workers' comp, you know, for four, five, six months, and we fully expect them to return, but there needs to be a mechanism beyond FMLA.
Yeah, and there's also, you know, if you have a year put out, you also have to be careful, too, where if somebody could never come back to work, but you've got to hold their job open for a year, then you have no way to be able to replace them either, so.
Right, so it's usually, FMLA is three months, and then three months of, you know, that, at which point, the six-month mark has now been hit, six months and a day.
Yeah.
You then start reviewing what the next steps are.
Whether it's a reasonable accommodation, or, yeah, right.
What other things apply?
Doesn't this, a person on unpaid family medical leave, comma, leave of absence, comma, or extended sick leave shall not be entitled to holiday pay?
Right, but she said she took that out.
But she took the unpaid leave section out, so there's no-
But I mean, this is in the updated version, right, or is this the old version?
Does it say, is it section 8.9?
It's section 8.1, under chapter, chapter 8, 8.1, holidays. The next page, it says, "A person on unpaid family leave, leave of absence, or extended sick leave shall not be entitled to holiday pay."
Correct, that's, that's the holiday pay section, but there's no unpaid leave section.
Yeah, but I mean-
So.
Specifically, but I mean, it does specifically say there is a mechanism for leave of absence, or-
It's referring, it's referring to a policy that-
That I took out.
That was in there, that one was.
It's referring to a policy I took out. All right, so we'll correct that.
So basically, you're saying that what you did, that leave of absence is now undefined in the policy?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
So I just, we'll amend it, okay, I'll send it over. Okay, thank you, yep. It's, this section called it reserve service leave, I changed it to military leave because it includes all forms of military service. Groomed leave was the other one where we removed the requirement of the completion of probationary period. So if there is a death in the family, and, you know, it's legitimate and they need a day off, they get it during the probationary period. I removed the earned paid, the whole earned paid leave law, I removed that whole policy under this handbook. And what we do is, we hand out, I don't know if you do the same thing, but we hand out the earned paid leave policy to all the seasonal, you know, not regular, you know, during orientation, because otherwise, it looks like, if you don't word it correctly, that you're giving extra time to people who already get paid time off or vacation or sick. And so, what we are only required under this new law of 112021 is to ensure that either our vacation, our sick, or our PTO is compliant with the law. And if it is, we can put a, we put a statement in there that says that this section complies with the earned paid leave law, but what it doesn't cover are the people that now, we have to then provide earned paid leave that we never had to do before, which are these sort of, some firefighter call-ins, some, you know, there's a whole-
Reserve employee.
Host of employees that we now have to provide this earned paid leave to as a result of the 112021 law. Just updated language and the benefits, nothing, nothing that made any difference, just language. Main pers, you folks actually have the, you went before, whoever you had to go before, to get the open enrollment period for main pers, main state retirement. And so, we just made sure we added that language in there, that you, there is a one-time chance to enroll during an open enrollment period. So you have that option, I added it in. This was a section I just didn't really quite understand, I'm sure there's a story behind it, but section 10.2 deductions, there was called-out deductions for payment of Berwick property taxes and a property tax club, and cellular phone payments. And I think it was probably a mechanism where people could have their bills paid by their, by the salary through the town, and that's just never a good practice, so I removed it.
Was anybody taking advantage of that policy?
I think one person was, and then, I, that would probably be a Lisa question. I think one person used to and then left, maybe, the tax.
I mean, I've never heard anybody, it's never come up.
There was, there was somebody who was getting their, they were on the tax club, and every single week, we'd print a paper check and bring it down to Patty, and they'd pay their taxes through payroll.
Yeah, we have quite a few, I don't think there's anyone currently on that program.
It just seems like an administrative nightmare to my, in my opinion.
Yeah, so, there's no way on, and so by changing the policy, we're not directly affecting any current employees.
I think we checked on that, too, because we would have wanted to have grandfathered that person, yeah. And then, oh, this, so the only thing in your appendix right now is the substance abuse testing procedure, which is predominantly for CDL drivers through the federal government, so there has to be a requirement for that. And that's the whole appendix that when you do hire somebody that's required to have a CDL, they would have to, they're obviously going to get a copy of the personnel handbook, but we would have them sign up on that specific policy, as is required by the law. And I, that is, that's it.
Do other towns have every employee's bill, or just the CDL drivers?
Say that again?
Do other towns have every employee's drug test, or just the-
No, they don't anymore because of the, you know, because of the main law with marijuana. It just doesn't make sense. There is reasonable suspicion that we can certainly act upon if, you know, we have, MMA provides training for people to learn, you know, how to detect if somebody, if there's suspicion, and we can go through that process up there, but we don't, we don't typically drug test anymore, yeah.
Especially in green.
Yeah. Can I go back to 3.4, the probationary period? And I only ask that because it may be in the CBA, the police CBA, but I'm not sure. So I'm just looking for clarification. So, the probationary period has been removed completely? Or is there a probationary period?
It shouldn't have been.
So remove requirement to wait, okay, before, to use that. So what is the probationary period for a regular employee compared to a law enforcement offender?
Six months.
Everyone is six months?
Yep.
So for clarification purposes, law enforcement?
Except for law enforcement.
Is it six, right, I was going to say-
No, it's a year after they graduate from the academy.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that stipulated in their CBA?
I am almost 100% sure, but we should probably double-check that.
Because if not, it should be in here.
Yeah.
It should be in here anyways.
Yeah.
Just to reinforce that.
I can put that in.
Just because there's confusion sometimes about-
Sure.
Well, my date of hire was this, but it's a year post-graduation.
Right. Yep, I'll put that in.
See, I knew we'd have it on the December agenda.
And then, well, there has to be some edits.
There's a couple.
And then, I mean, so I can let someone else talk. The only other thing that, like I said, I gave some suggestions ahead of time. The only thing that I, that she changed that I really do appreciate is the fact that we spent quite a bit of time discussing approving in the budget and hiring our HR representative. It's really important that that is reflected within the policy manual, that employees, you know, are designated to go to HR to ask these benefit-related questions. you know, are designated to go to HR to ask these benefit-related questions. I understand the position didn't exist prior to Han Cassidy, but in order to, if this is a policy manual to move forward, it should be included in there to direct people to the appropriate place. And I just want to reiterate, when it comes to like harassment cases, things like that, understand that Cassidy's new, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent her from saying, going to James and saying, I got this relatively big case, and sort of speaking of it broadly, asking for guidance about, should I get someone from the outside, should I help? I'm just saying that it separates him from getting in the weeds so that he can have that neutrality. It doesn't mean, oh geez, we can't tell James. That's not what it means. It just means.
Unless James is involved, in which case.
Well, yeah. Then we can't tell anyone.
There's a different group that needs to go.
But that way, that there's some protection for both the employee and the town to say that when it's done and you want to review it, there's that accusation of, well, he was prejudiced to begin with, no, because I was not hands-on, may have provided some guidance, Stager, but I didn't, it wasn't me doing the interviewing, it wasn't me doing that kind of stuff. So I think that's a matter of protection, so.
Yeah, no, 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 I kind of jumped on you. I was just gonna say, it's the same thing too, so if James isn't the one making that decision, and if someone's, if someone's appealing at that part, he's the appeal, you know, so it's, you know, there's, there's somebody else there, that's, he's got the authority to appeal, or to oversee the appeal without being the one that was involved in it.
Yeah, and we're actually, we talked about this a little bit today too, as we, you know, we really need to make sure that department heads and employees understand that mechanism. So going forward, it's, it'll be a change for them, you know, so that when there, there's a protocol, when there are, you know, issues and things that they need help for, they, they need to really start there. And usually what we were talking about too is oftentimes, and Linda probably sees it a lot too, is sometimes people want to go to HR to help resolve a minor conflict between them and their supervisor, and usually what I provide are strategies for them to do it themselves, because a lot of times people want HR to sort of, you know, take care of all their problems in the workplace, and so.
Yeah, just give me the answer.
Yeah, so we're having, we're gonna be having some of those trainings too, just to understand, you know, as an employee, how do I handle sort of any sort of a conflict? So once this is, you know, all done, we plan for a rollout and a training and all of that.
Great, great, I think you did a great job.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, edits?
I got a couple typos, I'll just email them.
Please email them to me. It's so hard to not catch every typo.
No, I'm sure, there's, there's plenty of pages, I'm just like, oh, okay.
Yes, please.
And I missed it the first couple times during, I'm like, oh, I saw that one.
Yeah, yeah, good, thank you. I appreciate it.
I brought it up last week, but Monday at 000 hours through Sunday 2400 hours is the same time.
Yeah, I know, I fixed that, I didn't know that.
So it's, it's a.
Twenty, it's 23.
23, 59, 59.
Whoever brought that up, I fixed it. Thank you. Numbers aren't my thing, just so you know.
Okay, so we will table this until next meeting, when we'll have the fully revised, all the typos and things done, and we can vote on approving it. Because otherwise, because otherwise, I think it's great, we looked at it for six weeks, we've looked, we've looked at it so many times now.
I know, I'm so sorry, I was sick of two different times.
We, we, we caught everything hopefully.
Excellent.
By now, so.
Great.
I think it's a great improvement.
Great.
And I think most of the changes are, are minor.
Right.
Like you said, like that, so unless you'd like to grace us with your presence again, James, it would be nice maybe if Cassidy presented the next one.
Are you comfortable with it?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Good.
That's awesome, good.
I'll make a motion to table this until next meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
In all cases.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Cassidy gets three meetings in a row.
Abatement.
The fun stuff.
All right, good evening. Okay, the first one is a personal property abatement for York Hospital, account number 693. The personal property account referenced above was listed as taxed and being taxed in error. In accordance with Maine R-36 MRS 652-1K, property leased, buy, and solely used for its purpose as a licensed hospital is not eligible for taxation. So as a result, we are looking to abate them $1,612.58.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we grant the abatement for Ford Dana Drive for the amount of $1,612.58.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Next one is a real estate abatement on map R-36, lot 4-11, 11 Pine Hill Mobile Home Park. Taxpayer filed an abatement requesting inspection stating that the property was overvalued based on its condition. Upon a physical inspection, it was determined that the property above reference had interior damage which affected the valuation. Adjustments have been made for the water damage and minor interior defects. As a result, it is recommended the valuation be adjusted by $1,200 from $39,800 to $38,600, resulting in an abatement of $21.98. I'll make a motion that we grant the abatement for 11 Pine Hill Mobile Home Park for the amount of $21.98.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Next one is another personal property abatement for account number 1016, 12 Sullivan Street. The personal property account referenced above was taxed inconsistently with, inconsistently with local practice for equipment valued under $10,000. The taxable equipment was valued at $2,213, which is under the $10,000 limit. The remaining business equipment is not taxable under the Maine Business Equipment Tax Exemption for personal property. So due to that inconsistency, we're recommending that they get an abatement of $40.54. I'll make a motion to grant an abatement to 12 Sullivan Street for the amount of $40.54.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Next one is a real estate at map R-35, lot 19-1, 46 Hubbard Road. The subject parcel has a single-family home and a tiny home on the property. The taxpayer felt the taxes had increased excessively this year. After investigation, it was found that the tiny home was being taxed twice as an outbuilding and also as a second home on the property. We deleted that outbuilding, which reduced the value by $42,000 from $392,800 to $350,800. It is recommended that an abatement in the amount of $769.44 be granted.
I'll make a motion to grant the abatement to 46 Hubbard Road in the amount of $769.44.
Okay. No second to that?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. The last one is a real estate account, map R-23, lot 2, 185 Hubbard Road. Subject parcel is a recently constructed, reconstructed, single-family home. The new home was measured incorrectly. Upon inspection, it was determined that the measurement needed to be revised. Additionally, the taxpayer demonstrated that the property acreage was also incorrect on the record. The acreage was revised. We recommend an abatement of, to reduce the value by $116,300 from $508,800 to $393,500, and issue an abatement in the amount of $2,130.62.
I'll make a motion to grant the abatement to 185 Hubbard Road in the amount of $2,130.62.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much. Have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Have a good evening.
I was gonna say, should I call for?
Just thinking.
Lost my thought. All right. Second public comment. There you go.
My name is Jenny Fall. I'm a resident of Berwick, and I've lived here for close to 40 years now.
Address?
Nine Worcester Road, Berwick, Maine. Was there something else I have to give?
Nope, that's it. Name and address.
I want to make the community aware that there is a threat in the community that's preying on boys between the ages of 10 to 14. The Predator is also a minor, but an older minor. The Predator is getting children from the rec field to join this gang in town, and the children that are being targeted are young boys. They are brought to this Predator, they are instructed to go through their parents' house to find out what medications, if they smoke weed, if they have shrooms or any other illicit substance. They are instructed to steal some of it and bring it back to the headquarters, where all of the children are forced to partake in doing this, smoking drugs or taking drugs, and if they don't, they get physically accosted. I'm sorry. These, these children are preteen, brain development isn't all there, and they're all hormonal. They're being sexually abused by this person, they are being physically abused by this person, they are being manipulated by this person, they are pitting parents against each other. They are going into parents' phones and changing contact information so that parents don't have any idea what's going on. They are walking the streets at night. I really strongly encourage parents not to let their young boys go to the rec field unattended by supervision by an adult. I know of at least eight boys in this circle right now that are experiencing this, and it is my job to make certain that the boys in this community are safe, because my son is one of them. I don't know what the town can do, but I am fighting a battle right now to save my son. So I would like everybody to be on high alert, because these children should not be experiencing this, and I've lived here for 36 years of my life. I played at that rec field when I was a kid, I played softball there. I brought my child there, he's played T-ball all the way through, and now he's in a crisis unit. I'm sorry that I'm so emotional, but I don't have my son this Thanksgiving because of this. And I don't know what can be done, I know there's already cameras at the rec field, I know this, they're breaking into people's houses as well, in vehicles. I can't even tell you the ages of these boys. Our age, the youngest that I know of right now is 10. Showed up on my doorstep at 1:00 AM in the morning this morning. She was there with me. Two boys that this Predator, who is still a minor, so at this point feels untouchable, because even though there's, law has been notified and things, nothing's happening, and it continues. That fight that happened down in front of the town hall that my son was involved in, I was told it was all due to racial, because my son is biracial. Come to find out, the leader of this gang correlated that entire thing, because the victim of that fight used to be one of that person's little boys. But that little boy didn't continue to do what that person wanted, so she sucked, she's, she unleashed her other little boys after that child. And I am ashamed, now that I know what's really going on. I am ashamed that my son had any part in that, but at the same time, he is not, he is 12. He will not be 13 until June. This boy has been subjected to things when I thought he was going to the rec field to watch baseball games of his friends. People want to blame me, that why didn't the parent not know what's going on? That's why I am alerting all the parents in this town. There is a danger field out there, and these kids are getting hurt really bad. And I'm sorry that I'm yelling, I am just very emotional over this. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
Juan, thank you for coming, but you said.
Do you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry, just for clarification, you did know.
Because I was told I wouldn't get questions.
No, I, I told you that.
This is a serious, 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 serious issue.
Right, I'm just curious, you're bringing this up, have you been, confirmed you have been in contact with the police department?
There's an eviction, there's, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. But I just want to make sure that there were.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. My son went to crisis on Friday for saying he was gonna slit his wrists. And I'm sorry, at 12 years old, that is not when you should be introduced to the stuff that that child has been introduced to.
Any other public comment? Any other business non-agenda items?
Is there such a thing as a neighborhood watch? I know that.
Can you come to the podium, so we can hear you?
Is there such a thing as a neighborhood watch? I know that, I'm actually from a different town, and there they have neighborhood watch type things set up, and also they actually make high schoolers and their parents sort of sign an agreement that if you're at someone's house, a parent would not knowingly allow underage drinking, sort of things like that. I don't know if that would be a school-based program or a town-based.
That'd be something that'd go through the school, and as for a neighborhood watch, as far as the town, we have the police. You know, the neighborhood watch would be something that the, the community would organize on their own, separate from the town. As far as right now, I don't think there is anything specific, but the town is always welcome to, to do one.
Neighbors, helping neighbors would be a lovely idea, I think, in this situation.
Can we get your name and address, please?
Of course, I'm Crystal Moody.
And your address?
18 School Street.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other business?
I have something. On December 5th, there is a BMV training in Stanford 2-4 that I feel is very important for my staff to attend, so I'd like to close customer service from 1:30 to 5:00. It's a Tuesday, it's our slowest day of the week.
From 1:30 to 5:00?
What's the date?
On December 5th.
I'll make a motion that we close customer service December, from?
1:30 to 5:00.
1:30 to 5:00.
I'll second the motion. I just asked that we put it up on the website, make sure it gets up on the website when we're closed.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah, the, we're gonna, we're gonna have a parade before we meet again. Is there anybody going to the parade? Anybody gonna be a part of it? I'll be with the Girl Scouts.
Have a good night, thank you.
Yeah, I'll be walking with the Girl Scouts, so.
Have a good night.
Anything else?
Joint meeting?
Joint meeting? Yes.
If anybody from the public has anything that they would like us to discuss about land use ordinances, then please.
And, and of course, they can come to the joint meeting as well. Are we gonna do a public comment or anything?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is on Wednesday, no?
The 29th, yeah.
Wednesday, Wednesday the 29th here?
It'll be.
In this room?
It'll be in the auditorium. There's actually a Board of Appeals meeting the same night.
Okay. All right, so yes, November 29th, Wednesday, 6:30, joint meeting, town is welcome, the planning board and the select board. The December 1st is the tree lighting, and December 2nd is the town parade, the holiday parade.
Before that, there's Thanksgiving.
Yes, I was, I was getting to that one. Yes.
Skipping to Christmas.
No, I never.
Thursday, no, I never skip to Christmas, I always go to the last minute. Thursday's Thanksgiving, everybody should have a safe and happy Thanksgiving, don't fry your turkeys unless you know what you're doing, don't ruin fire departments holiday Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.